I'd like to call the Lancaster Board of Education. Yeah, I used my cellphone, Chris. I only get to do this once a year, so we'll... I'd like to call Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the pledge to the flag and also a moment of silence for individual reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for clarity and justice for
Thank you. Just for a quick explanation of what's happening today, because this is a board meeting that's unique and dissimilar to the others that happen throughout the course of the year. For people who may be in the audience or may be watching on the website or on TV, today is the Board of Education's reorganizational meeting. So, this is the...for about seven minutes, it's the only seven minutes that I chaired the meeting. The rest of the time, once the Board has an opportunity to reorganize, if and as it desires, then the new president of the Board will take over and take over from there for the rest of the year. So, that's an explanation of what will be happening this evening. After that, the Board will be doing its business. It's an important meeting as they, you know, appoint a lot of major contractors and set the...charter the course for the 2017-18 school year. So, having said that, we'll move to 4.0, administration of oath. And the 4.1 is the administration of the oath to the superintendent of schools, me. Mr. Glenn Jackson, Mr. Michael Sage, and Mr. Patrick Uteg. Next, 5.0 is the election of officers for the 2017-18 school year. 5.1 is the president of the Board of Education for this 2017-18 school year. Do I have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Patrick Uteg for president.
Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Congratulations, Mr. Uteg.
Thank you.
My favorite part of the movie, I can...the meeting, I can pass this over.
Thank you. 5.2 is...could I have a nomination for vice president of the Board? I'd like to nominate Bill Gallagher as vice president.
Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Congratulations, Mr. Gallagher. And 5.3 is the administration of the oath. 6.1 would be the clerk for the Board, and that's Ms. Andrew Janik. 6.2 is our district clerk, Mrs. Carol Peck. 6.3 is the deputy treasurer, Beth Albrecht. 6.4, our tax collector, and that is on the attachment. Do we have a...
Patrick, before we move on, could I ask that maybe Mr. Jackson's kids come up and we can get a picture of them with him?
That's a great idea. Sometimes those details fail to, you know, come to my mind. So, thank you, Mr. Sage, absolutely.
So, we have the tax collectors from Lancaster, Chickewaga, and Elma. 6.5 is our internal claims auditor, and that would be Erie One Bocie's. 6.6 is the clerk of the pro tem...pro Board Tem, and that's Lisa Fanara. And 6.7, and do we administer the oath to them this evening, or it's...
Nope. What happened?
In abstention, right? Yeah, okay.
We have to do same.
Oh, yes. Okay, so moving on. So, as we move forward tonight, many of the tasks that we'll go through are formalities, but part of the rules of Board governance, and that's what we do at every reorganization meeting to move us forward into another successful school year. So, it is a great pleasure that I reappoint Mrs. Janik. It's a pleasure to work with you as always, and of course, Mr. Jackson, welcome to you. 8.0, or 7.0, official undertakings are bonding limits. There was an attachment to the Board agenda which lists each of our bonding limits for the different positions. 8.0 is designations. 8.1 is the establishment of dates of our regular meetings, and that was an attachment as well. And of course, as we go through the...we have to vote on each of these?
Well, no, you didn't put on the...
Right. On the bonding limits?
No, the officers.
No, appointment of officers is...
As...okay.
Each one.
Eight-six, so like six, yeah.
As a group.
So, 6.0, we can do 6.1 through 6.7.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we lump together 6.1 through 6.7 and vote on those.
Did you just lump together the 0s?
Yeah, well, we went through each of the 6.1 through 6.7, so let's...
As far as the 0s, you lump together the 0s.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, so since we've listed all the 6.1 through 7, could I have a motion to accept those appointments?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0, the bonding limits, could I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 8.0 are the designations. 8.1 is the establishment of the dates of our regular meetings. 8.2 is the approval of the 18-19 budget calendar. 8.3, the official bank depository for all of our funds. 8.4 are the official newspapers, being the Lancaster Bee and the DePue Bee. 8.5 is our official television station, is Time Warner Cable, and 8.6 is our official radio stations, Wben, WXRL, and WGR. Could I have a motion to accept each of those designations?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Our authorizations, I will go individually for the...for posterity and also for people who are watching the Board meeting, and then we'll vote collectively at the end, and if anyone has any questions about the whole of them, please feel free to ask. So, 9.1 is to authorize the designation of signatures on all school district checks with signature plates, Ms. Carol Peck and Ms. Beth Albrecht. 9.2 is authorize submission of bid notices as needed to local newspapers, and that would be Jamie Phillips. 9.3 is authorize the district clerk to open bids at the time and place advertised on behalf of the Board in her absence. The assistant superintendent for Business and Support Services or her designated representative will perform this duty. 9.4, the authorization to establish petty cash funds, and there's a limit for each position that's attached. 9.5, the authorization of payment of bills in advance of Board of Education upon approval of the warrant by the internal claims auditor. 9.6, to authorize the chief school administrator or his designee to approve attendance and payment of expenses of Board members and staff at meetings or conferences in advance of Board approval within the limits approved by the Board and the current budget and within provisions of existing Board policy. 9.7, authorize the prior approval of temporary cash advances from the general fund to the federal aid fund. Warrants for both the general fund and the federal fund will list each in advance, general fund when it is given and federal fund when it is paid back. 9.8, authorize participation in Bocie's cooperative bids. 9.9, the authorization to accept donations or funds for the provision of field trip services and use of district buildings, and that would be Mrs. Phillips again. And then the authorization of the use of district credit cards. 9.11, authorize the hourly rate for off-duty security officers at $27 an hour. 9.12, authorize Jamie Phillips to certify the district's payroll. 9.13, to authorize processing of all budget transfers on chief school officer's approval per the attached policy 5330. 9.14, authorize the superintendent to apply for grants and aid, state and federal. 9.15, authorize payment to non-Lancaster Central Teachers Association members who perform Schedule D and E duties at Schedule D and E rates per the current LCTA bargaining agreement. 9.16, authorize the superintendent to approve contracts under $2,500. And 9.17, authorize the superintendent to approve bond issued change orders in amounts less than $35,000 prior to Board approval. Could I have a motion to accept each of those authorizations?
So moved.
Second.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on any of those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved.
Just to interrupt real quick, sorry. Between 9 and 10, we did not announce that Mr. Dipchinsky's been excused from the meeting.
She's...I'm sorry.
I know we typically do that earlier on, but obviously with it being the reorg meeting, you know...
Yeah, and it slipped my mind. Yep, she, as many of us did, she had some issues with water today, so she's tending to those, so she has been excused from this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. 10.0, other appointments. 10.1, appoint agents for the Board to oversee the investment of temporarily idle district funds, and that would be Jamie Phillips and Carol Peck. 10.2, appoint the deputy treasurer of extra class activity accounts, and that's Beth Albrecht. 10.3, appoint the purchasing agent, that's Jamie Phillips. 10.4 is to appoint the delegates, and there was a full attachment, and...should I go through them?
Yeah, you should go through them.
Okay. 10.4, the Erie County Association of School Board delegate assembly, Mr. Jackson with the alternate being Mrs. Metz. The budget and finance team is Mr. Gallagher and with myself, Mr. Uteg as an alternate. The legislative team is Mrs. Dipchinsky and Mrs. Christopher. The voting delegate is Mr. Jackson, and the alternative is Mrs. Metz. She's not going to be able to attend the convention, so would anyone else like to be the alternate?
For what?
For the voting delegate.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Christopher. And our liaison with NISBA is Mrs. Christopher. 10.5...
So we had to vote on that?
So we could still keep these in the lump though, right? Yep. 10.5, appoint audit committee members, and that's Mrs. Dipchinsky, Mr. Gallagher, and Mr. Jackson. 10.6, appoint health insurance and food service committee members. Health insurance, Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Sage. Food service, myself, Mr. Uteg, and Mrs. Metz. District-wide health and safety committee is Mrs. Christopher with Mrs. Dipchinsky as the alternate. And then 10.7, appoint building use committee members, and that's Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Metz. 10.7, so we have 10.7. 10.8 would be appoint school physician, and that's Lancaster-DePue Pediatrics. 10.9 is to appoint the chief dental officer, and that's Brennan Brennan. 10.10, appoint Acoustar Incorporated for employee physicals. 10.11, appoint members of the Committee on Special Education, the Committee on Preschool Special Education and Impartial Hearing Officers. 10.12, appoint the fire code inspector, and that's George Peace. 10.13, appoint independent auditor for the period beginning July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, and that's Drescher and Malecki. 10.14, appoint risk assessment and internal auditing services, and that's Freed and Maxick. 10.15, appoint the school attorney, and that's Harris Beach. 10.16, appoint Hodgson and Russ for ongoing tax certiorates and to provide continued bond counsel as needed. 10.17 is appoint Bengert and DiMarco as an additional district legal counsel for tax certiorary proceedings as needed. 10.18, appoint asbestos designee, and that's Nathan Mason. 10.19, appoint an insurance broker, that's the Evans Agency Insurance. 10.20, appoint records management officer, and that's Jamie Phillips. 10.21, appoint the appointing officer for civil service functions, that's Mrs. Phillips. 10.22, appoint the financial advisor, that's Capital Markets Advisors. 10.23 is appoint a residency hearing officer, and that's Dr. Valley. 10.24, appoint Title IX officers, Michelle Ziegler, Marie Perrini, Andrew Kufold, Jamie Phillips, and Karen Marchioli. 10.25, appoint the census enumerator, and that's Dr. Perrini. 10.26, appoint school resource officers as our law enforcement unit. 10.27 is appoint supervisor of attendance, that's Dr. Perrini. 10.28, appoint records access officer, that's Mrs. Phillips. 10.29 is appoint a liaison for homeless children and youth, and that's Sandy Camerota. 10.30, appoint a chemical hygiene officer, that's Clifford Trapper and Stacy Lauk. 10.31, appoint a designated educational official to receive court notification regarding a student's sentence adjudication in certain criminal cases and juvenile delinquency proceedings, that's Dr. Valley. 10.32, appoint a school pesticide representative, that's Nathan Mason. 10.33, appoint reviewing official, hearing official, and verification official for the participation in the federal child nutrition program. Reviewing official, Tammy Ogulearo. Hearing official, Jamie Phillips, and verification official, Tammy Ogulearo as well. 10.34, appoint a post-insurance federal tax requirement compliance monitoring officer, and that's Jamie Phillips. 10.35, appoint the Board President and/or Vice President to appoint the...an impartial hearing officer per Board policy 7670. And then 10...36, appoint Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Pupil Personnel Services to make all residency determinations. Could I have a motion to accept all of the other appointments?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments on those appointments?
I think your comments should just be made that these really aren't new appointments, they're just continuations. Basically, they're all, right? I mean, I can't see anyone new on here. It's just a formality, but for those watching, because it just looks like, how did you do all that, appointing and...
Right. If someone's new in their role, they may pick up a duty that's...
It's a formality.
Exactly. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.0 is listed as other items. 11.1, establish conference reimbursement rates for meals at a maximum of $64 a day with receipts. 11.2 is the readoption of all policies and code of ethics in effect during our previous school year. And 11.3 is establish a mileage reimbursement rate according to the IRS approved rate currently at .535 per mile. Could I have a motion to accept those other items?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.0, presentations, we have none. 13.0, we'll move into our regular session. 14.0, correspondence, we have a letter from the Village of DePue dated June 16th, 2017. 15.0 is approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes, meeting minutes from June 19th, 2017?
So moved.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 16.0, items from staff organizations. Do we have anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Captain Gladstone, I would like to congratulate Mr. Fisag, Mr. Sage, Mr. Jackson, and their appointment to the School Board, and we look forward to working with the entire School Board on this call.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, thank you. 17.0, Board reports. Does anyone on the Board have anything they'd like to report on? Hearing none, I would just like to say that I attended yet another graduation, this time as the father of a graduate, and I'm very proud of him and all of his friends and colleagues and everything they accomplished. And I have yet to...or to yet again point out really what a template for a proper and exciting graduation night we put on here, and the staff at Lancaster really performs an outstanding and almost impossible duty. And I even heard from the folks at Kleinhands that schools coming to use their facilities really should call upon the administrators and personnel at Lancaster to follow their format. So, my hat's off to the whole administration and to the graduates as well, and they now enter the records as former students, and we wish all of the graduates well in their future pursuits. So, well done, Lancaster, yet again.
Now that you mention that, can I just make a comment about that?
Yep.
I forgot that was after...since our last Board meeting, but I have to echo that because I attended, I'll just say, another school's graduation ceremony after ours. It doesn't even remotely compare. Not a single note of music was played. Just completely different. The stage was set up different, and that's okay, difference's okay, but you don't appreciate our graduation ceremony until you go to another one. So, and I've been to how many, including my own here, hands down, so I can totally see someone from Kleinhands making that comment. But Caesar, I'm glad you're here because that whole, I told you that night, that piece that you did for the kids going off to the military was just by far my favorite part, just different. I really hope you do that again.
Part of it, that's good.
Yeah, that was just so...that was just awesome and so needed, and those kids, that meant something to everyone. You saw the reaction it got, and I really, really respected that, and I hope we can continue. That was just great, so thanks for doing that.
Thank you, Mrs. Christopher. Yeah, Mr. Marchioli, we got the picture of you and my son shaking hands, you know, and it's now on the mantle, and it just occurred to me, I'm thinking, how many mantles is Caesar on? You know? Must be thousands, right?
It's...
Okay, all right, moving on. 18.0, old business. Does anyone have any old business they'd like to bring up? Okay, 19.0, new business. 19.1, the personnel items. 19.1.1. Now, as we vote on these personnel changes, there is an addendum which lists three additional personnel items, and then we will also have another addendum after we approve these personnel changes. So, could I have a motion to approve 19.1.1, which are the ones that were included in the packet, and the three that are listed on the addendum?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. And now we have 19.1.2, and this is an addendum to the personnel changes, and it reads, upon review and approval, I along with the interview committee highly recommend Stacy Conti, who is here this evening, for the position of assistant principal at an annual salary of $85,000 prorated effective August 1st, 2017. Her four-year probation would begin August 1st, 2017 through July 31st, 2021. Could I have a motion to accept that addendum to the personnel changes?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Okay, 19.2, education items. 19.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Education's report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 19.2.2, the Committee on Preschool Special Education, could I have a motion to accept that report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 19.2.3 is the first reading for textbook world history, the 2017 edition. 21.0, business and financial items. 21.1, the financial reports. Could I have a motion to accept those, that report?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 21.2, policy adoption, 6470, acceptable use policy. Could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 21.3, the policy adoption, AD271, Children's Internet Protection Act, the Internet Content Filtering and Safety Policy. Could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 21.4 is a contract between the district and Western New York Physical and Occupational Therapy. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 21.5 is a contract with sports rehab physical therapy. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Opposed? So moved. 21.6 is a contract with Lancaster Junior Redskins for facility use. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
You could combine that with .7.
.7, yep, let's do that. 0.7, yep, let's do that. For storage agreement is 21.7. Could I have a motion to accept those two?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 21.8 is the food service monthly reports. Could I have a motion to accept the May 2017 report?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 21.9 is the surplus equipment report. Could I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 21.10 is the auction results. Could I have a motion to accept the auction results?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 21.12, 21.13, and 14 are all bid awards, transportation parts and supply, athletic equipment, uniforms and supplies, and capital project phase 6C. Could I have a motion?
21.11 is a contract with Health, 0.7.
Yep. Okay, we'll do the contract, then the bid awards. 21.11 is a contract with Independent Health Corporation. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Now, 21.12, 13, and 14 are all bid awards. Could I have a motion to accept those as a group?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 21.15 is a surplus textbook report. Could I have a motion to accept that?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 21.16, a contract with Pediatric Services of America. Could I have a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 21.17 is our 2017-18 school lunch prices. Could I have a motion to accept those prices?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 21.18 is a tax certiorary with 6828 Broadway. Could I have a motion to accept that settlement for certiorari?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. And 21.19 is another tax certiorary with Sky Harbor property. Could I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Need a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 22.0 is our public hearing. We don't have anyone signed up to speak this evening. 23.0 is future presentations. We have none planned at this time. Our next school board, next Board of Education meeting will be a boardwork session on July 31, where we'll be examining the reserve funds, their balances, and their uses. That'll be on July 31, 2017, at 6:00 PM at Central Avenue School. 20... 24, what?
Pick that thing?
Yes.
I'm gonna pick that.
Yeah, it's your last meeting.
We don't normally do that, too?
No, that was, that was something that was added on as an informational session, so that we can fully examine the reserve funds, each of their purposes, and how we go about utilizing them.
How long do you, how long will that, you think that'll be? Three hours?
(laughing)
Just give the science stuff.
Is it a monitor here, so you can like...
I, I made up a conflict.
I'm sure you'll be precise and very interesting, Mrs. Phillips. I look forward to it.
Do we have, I have all good... We have to be in the majority for that?
Well, I don't think we'd be voting on anything, right? It would just be...
It's a boardwork session, so we're in the...
I mean, I, I may have a conflict, as always.
But do you want to try to, uh...
No. I don't want to keep doing that unless...
Well, I think, I mean, I think that's, it's a good idea in light of the fact that we did have...
No, I agree as well.
Yeah, a bit of discussion around the election time and the budget, voting for the budget as to how reserve funds were utilized, and I think if the district puts forth the way that we approach these funds and what they mean specifically, according to New York State, and how we go about not only putting reserves away, but how we, how and when we tap into those to ensure the financial stability of the district is all good information. So again, I wholeheartedly look forward to that very long and very interesting presentation, Mrs. Phillips.
And also, we will be videotaping that, so you could watch.
I, I'm gonna try and make a change there. I'm just putting...
Yeah?
He'll be here for us, right, Keith?
And Mr. Jackson, it just keeps getting more fun and more fun, and I know you're looking forward to it as well. We'll compare numbers before we attend. Okay, 24.0 is adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting if there's nothing else?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming, everyone.